It's been organized by our lovely Tracy, always. If you haven't met her, she really did a lot of the legwork to make this happen and make this come together. It is obviously really important in our community for everyone to be involved and to make sure that if these people are going to represent us on the school board, then we know exactly what it is that they stand for. So this is a really important event and we're really glad that you came out to participate in it. So thank you so much for being here. We also wanted to thank our candidates because without them, we wouldn't have community leadership. So it's really valuable for them to put their time and their energy and their passion into participating and leading our community. So without further ado, I'll introduce you to each one of them. We have Doug Stevens here, Lois Kanashiki, and Ken Snyder will also be here. I'll lay out all the rules for how this is going to proceed. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves, lay out their position. We have a timekeeper that will be staying on top of making sure that they stay within their time limits. Once we do our introductions, we'll begin with some students submitted questions. Those questions have already been reviewed and prepared and so we'll start off with those and then we'll move to any audience questions that have been submitted into the box. And then we'll give our candidates the opportunity to make their closing statements and any final remarks that we wanted to make. Does anyone have any questions about how we're going to proceed?
I'll give you a one minute remaining and then a 10 second.
Okay, so we'll lead off with Doug Stevens. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure.
Do we do a microphone? Does anybody feel the need that we need to use the microphone or is this small enough, adequate venue?
It would help with the recording.
It would be helpful for the recording?
Yes.
Okay.
You're up with the microphone.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out this afternoon. Can you just switch it on?
He might have to.
Okay, is that better? There you go. Thanks, Mike. Just wanted to thank you all for coming out this afternoon at Jacobi Leslie's sentiments. I do think this is an important event. I wish we had more folks from the field of candidates here today to share their opinions with you, but nonetheless, I appreciate you taking the time on a Sunday afternoon. I am Doug Stevens and I'm here today just to share some of my viewpoints on issues that I'm sure you'll be willing to share with us. I am not here as a politician. I'm here as a former teacher within the district. And even though I'm currently a small business owner, I do believe I still have the heart of a teacher and that forms a lot of my opinions on topics that I, assuming are for you folks as constituents here within the Holliesburg School District. I'm also a proud father of four children aged five to 15, all of whom will be attending the district in the fall. Our youngest guy will be going to kindergarten and our oldest will be a junior right here at the high school in the fall. And our two daughters sort of fall in the middle. My lovely wife Lori of almost 23 years is also a teacher for the school district and we're proud of that fact, that we have that kind of representation and access and knowledge about how things function here, both of us being teachers in the district. I've lived in the area since 1995 and those of you that know me already know that I'm very active in the arts programs. My business that I mentioned is a business that focused primarily on repairing school band and orchestra instruments. We also do rentals and sales and I've been working at that since 2006. So I feel like in addition to having experience as an educator, I also bring to the table some of that understanding of the financial concerns that would be part of my specialty as a school board director. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Lois Kanashiki. I'm asking to be reelected to the school board. I believe it's extremely important to have as high quality public education as possible while keeping taxpayers in mind. Education can be the great leveler of society, providing all people with an opportunity to make the most of their God-given talents. Knowing this, I was at the forefront in the fight against the common core standards in Pennsylvania. I attended and spoke at the Pennsylvania Board of Education meeting on September 12th, 2013 with several dozen other Pennsylvanian citizens begging the board not to adopt these standards. The high school students who I thought would be here today, they're fortunate that they have received most of their primary education with the old standards. Students in elementary school today are involved in a massive experiment in K through 12 as education that I'm afraid won't end well. As a board member, I look for every opportunity to mitigate the damage that could be done by this educational experiment. I believe there are many ways we can improve the quality of our education, even with these new standards, some of which I have discussed with others in the community and administrators. If I am reelected to the board, I will continue to advocate for innovative ways we can improve the opportunities for all children in our community. Thank you.
Ken Snyder, lifelong resident of Blair County and of this school district. I started my education in a one-room schoolhouse called the Tannery School, which is now a small chapel up at St. Catherine's Roman Catholic Church right above Duncansville. I'm proud to be a graduate of Holliesburg High School. I went on to college and picked up a BA degree. I work in this area, but I'm retired now. And that's the envy of some of you, I'm sure, and proud of the reality of others. I haven't voted against anything on the school board. I haven't voted for anything on the school board. I've never been on the school board. I have been elected as a committee member two times on the ballot for allocating one. And I hope through my experience, if it is lacking in school board stuff, that I can be a fast learner, but I do have some people skills. And I think that's about as important as you get. If you exchange anything for people, you're in trouble.
Okay, thank you to all our candidates and... Hi, thanks. So it's coming out of the speaker. Is that...can you hear that? Does that work for the recording as well?
Yeah, we should be okay as long as it's like...
I can use my teacher voice.
You can just use your teacher voice, it'll be fine.
We can do that, okay. So let's begin with the student questions then. Those were pre-submitted and they were vetted to make sure that they apply to all the candidates. They're respectful and they are definitely on topic and have to do with what they want to see from their school board members. Okay, so the first question we have here is, what is the difference between bullying or harassment and protected speech? So what do you see as the difference between speech that would be considered bullying or harassing versus speech that needs to be protected and allowed? Do you have any minutes to think on it? We'll give each candidate two minutes to answer. Sure, and we'll lead off with Lois.
Bullying, harassment, and protected speech. So some of these terms may now be defined in statute. I'm not positive if they have been or not, but once terms are defined by statute, we have to go by the law. And one of the first jobs of the school board is try to avoid lawsuits against school district. School boards and administrators spend a lot of effort to avoid lawsuits because they can be very costly and embarrassing, costly financially and costly embarrassing way. Harassment can be a form of bullying, I mean my, just my personal opinion. Bullying is never acceptable. I was bullied as a child and I have very vivid memories of it, so I know what it feels like and I know how it affects a child. And my kids were bullied would have never have been tolerated and my children were taught to treat people with respect and to be courteous. And I would expect our teachers to try to enforce those kinds of values that hopefully are being taught at home and if they're not taught at home, it's very challenging, I'm sure, for teachers. And then, oh, I think speech should be protected. We should teach the value of the First Amendment, our ability for free speech. But as a human being, to be courteous is, should be a very important value as well. There's a legal differentiation there. You shouldn't be thrown in jail for being a bully necessarily, but you still shouldn't be a bully because it's not nice and it's not right. And this is part of just the values that we should teach our children as parents and hopefully teachers will reinforce that.
Thank you, Lauren.
Did you like trying to go next?
Yeah, I think we'll just keep working our way down.
Bullying has no place in any institution, whether it's your family, whether you're a parent, you have no right to bully your kids. When you're in an institution like school, there is no room for bullying. But who's the first line of defense? The parents? Hardly. Sometimes kids will not say a thing. They're afraid to say anything when something's happened. The first line of defense is the teacher. They have to keep their eyes and ears open and I'm telling you, you can pick it out if you're looking for it. And then it needs to go from there. Depending on the teacher, perhaps they are experienced enough and perhaps they can head off a confrontation. But it can continue. My grandson had to transfer from one school to another because of bullying. I didn't care for that, but it was a little bit farther out of my hands. That was his parents' responsibility. Frankly, the situation was bad, but it's been fixed and I'm happy for that. We need to be really aware of that. And I'm very, very cautious about people just being blamed for stuff. Really take some discernment. The teacher knows her students or his students and if they don't, they're probably not doing the job the way that they should.
So, you know, we could spend all day talking about the differences in these three terms as far as definition. I think we all have our own personal ideas on those thoughts. I would certainly be willing to say that I definitely felt that I was bullied as a student growing up. I'm originally from Titusville, Pennsylvania, which is up in the northwestern part of the state, just south of Erie. And unfortunately, I didn't grow up in a district like Holliesburg where there was such strong support for the arts. I've been a musician the majority of my life. Music is a very strong passion of mine as it is in my entire family. And that was not always a popular choice, unfortunately, as a young man. So I've always felt like I had some connection to students of my own I was teaching. Fortunately, I, you know, as a teacher of 10 years, I didn't have very, very many opportunities or instances rather where students were suggesting because of what they were, you know, participating in school, they were receiving some bullying. But I do know it is a reality in our school district. It would be naive to say otherwise. It's important to understand as a district that we have policies in place to try and address that. We do have a pretty well-established character ed program that helps combat some of those ideals. I think it's important, as with any issue, that we address it from the youngest ages on up. My youngest daughter this year is in second grade and we always kind of joke she'll come home sometimes and talk about the bullying program. And we had to set her straight on that, that it's not the program where you learn how to bully, but it's the anti-bullying program. But nonetheless, I think it's great that we're making kids aware of that distinction at a young age. Certainly I support free speech as long as it is done in a fashion that's not harmful to others. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question from a student. After many gun violence threats at our school this year, how are you going to be handling this situation better in the future to ensure that students always feel safe in our schools?
Give me that one more time, please.
Sure, no problem. After many gun violence threats at our schools this year, how are you going to be handling this situation better in the future to ensure students always feel safe in our
It is a good feeling to be safe. You can really be who you want to be and you really can put out if you want to. It's a big question and it's a hard question to answer because in different districts, different people, different classroom structure, almost in some cases, a different culture. That makes it pretty hard to make a standard, one shoe fits all. But whatever the case, students should enjoy and have a stress-free environment. Again, I think a lot of it comes back to the teacher in the classroom, but the whole atmosphere from superintendent down has to have a certain strictness about the idea that you're not going to carry on this way in our school. And it may need expulsion, it may be temporary time off, but whatever the case, it's got to be strictly enforced. They have to know, boys or stress situations are often just attacks on vulnerable people and they know it. And they themselves are cowardly. In the old days, somebody would just punch somebody out. You had an older brother going to school with you, he took care of you. He backed the fellow up in the corner and said, "Don't do it again." Those days are gone, I feel sure, but it's that type of spirit that I think helps people.
I find it really interesting, the first two student questions, both are dealing with safety and how they perceive the environment here at school. They're certainly valid questions and I hope that they're coming from concern and not a typical case of fear. Certainly, the district has been, you know, on top of this issue, I think, in pretty strong fashion in recent years. We would all, as a community, be foolish not to. I know that they've hired additional support staff, security officers at the various levels of the district to make sure that we have sort of first responders on hand should, God forbid, you know, something dealing with that kind of violence occur here within our school system. You know, I think we have to be ever vigilant, not just within the district, but in the community as a whole, to make sure that, you know, we're paying attention. And, you know, the adage of see something, say something. You know, we're very strong advocates of that in our household. We talk to our children about those kinds of concepts on a regular basis that oftentimes simply making the correct folks aware of a potential concern really can be the best way to diffuse that kind of situation. So, you know, it's a reality of the world we live in, like it or not, and I think we just have to be ever mindful and be watchful to do what we can to keep our children safe at all costs.
I was appointed to the Safe Schools Committee this past term and our board and I believe that Holliesburg School District is far ahead of a lot of other school districts in terms of planning for safety and security of our children. I'm very impressed with how our community has come together, the, all our whole law enforcement community and the administration to make sure that people are aware and prepared. They're doing trainings, they're doing drills in the schools. All these things are good and positive. I think that we do have to start training our children at age-appropriate, in age-appropriate ways that they, and our, our parents as well, and all of our community members, that we just all have to be more vigilant all the time. And I see Mr. Capozzi in the back of the room and I've done one of his trainings. He does an active shooter training school, which I highly recommend that everyone take advantage of, something of that nature in your community. And I think this is something that teenagers can do as well, these types of trainings. And we have age-appropriate drills we're doing in the elementary schools. But that being said, we can't, unfortunately, we cannot guarantee 100% safety for every person at every moment of the day. It's not a realistic thing, but we can do everything we can. I think we're doing a lot in Holliesburg. I am proud of our district for that respect and if you have suggestions or if you observe things in our community, in our district, at any time, please share it with our administration or a school board member if you have ways we can improve upon what we're doing. But keep in mind that our, our resources are always limited as far as money spent and you can spend a lot of money on security. So, so I think we're doing pretty well, but I hope we will all continue to be as vigilant as possible.
Thank you very much. I'll stand for all these questions if that makes it easier to hear.
Can I make a suggestion? Could you use the microphones, please?
Yeah, and do you want to try that speaker again? It's a different microphone, so it's not...
Share this one, maybe.
Okay, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So our next question comes from, oh, we're not doing names. What kind of relationship should a district or the school board, I think the student meant the school board, have with its community, with the parents and families? So what kind of relationship should the district or the board have with its community, with its parents and families?
Well, as is evidence of all of us being here today, I think one of the most key elements of being a school board member is transparency and willingness to be approachable. And, you know, as I said from the get-go, I'm not a politician, so I don't feel like I have, you know, canned statements or talking points. I just want to know truly what constituents are concerned about and what issues are important to the community. You know, having lived here almost 25 years, I feel like I have a pretty good sense of how our local community works and operates and sort of what some of the priorities are of the folks that live here. But I'm always open to new ideas. You know, I try very hard not to approach my relationship with my customers and my business from a standpoint where, you know, it's my way or the highway. I never want to create that attitude. You know, I come from a very strong Christian family background and I try to let those rules and code of ethics sort of dictate my relationships with people. And I really see, you know, if I'm elected, as it being an opportunity for me to get to know more folks in this wonderful community that we're so fortunate to have.
I think I messed up on the order there for that one.
I don't think it was going to take a person.
Want me to go next? So I have always tried to be as accessible as possible to anyone who would speak with me. I just printed my phone number and my email address in the paper so people could reach me easily. I like hearing from all kinds of people, teachers, parents, students, and hearing what's going on. My, my daughters are both graduated from the school district, so I don't get the inside intel like I used to, what's going on in the school buildings. But when parents share that kind of information with me, I do appreciate that. And we have to, we have to be speaking to people and hearing, getting all their feedback that we possibly can to give us as much information as possible. Was that, was there a word to that question?
If you're just building a connection between the board and the community.
I think it's mostly it's open communication and I've always been willing, like I said before, to discuss anything with people, especially when they disagree with me because I want to hear everyone's concerns, agree or disagree. So as long as we can all move on, we're not going to agree on everything, but we should, it's an opportunity to have a discussion and understand one another better and I hope we can continue to do that.
I wrote this reply, I'm just going to read it to the Altona Mirror on how can the board be more accessible to the community? To my knowledge, school board members have near, are never really been accessible to the broad community they serve. I couldn't have told you in all the years that I have been in Holliesburg School District, who was on the board and who wasn't. It just doesn't happen. And the only thing that seems to get press is when there is a big controversy. And when that's over, out of sight, out of mind. It's not that the board is hiding. It's not that at all. But it's something that happens. It's a reality. It's been that way for years and years and years. And there's not going to be any superstars go out and rescue the community. But I think I would agree very much with what Lois said, she makes herself accessible. I would want to do the same thing. Anytime, anyplace, call me, talk to me, and I will try to be prepared to give you answers that'll take care of things. And I will follow up on it. I can assure you. One phone call is not going to be the end of it. If you, if you have enough in your own mind that you want more, then I want to follow through with you. I would do that. I would like to see the newspaper have a regular feature with eye-catching board or called the Board Report and include all districts in Blair County and use the best super journalist who is fair, honest, and interesting to read.
Thank you very much.
The next question is, how do you plan to combat the financial support imbalances between athletics and the music and art programs? Do you want me to repeat one more time?
Yes.
How do you plan to combat the financial support imbalances between athletics and the music and art programs?
If I remember correctly from what, from the budget, we spend about the same amount on athletics and music per year. Could be wrong, but I believe it's about the same. Now, art, as in fine arts like Mrs. Watt, that type of art, we maybe, we don't spend as much on that one. It, I don't think it's as necessarily as costly, I'm not sure. But I didn't know that we were in a competition between all the arts. It's the first time I've ever had that question. But I think we do really well with our arts in the district. We do, and, and with athletics. The maintenance of our athletics facilities are very expensive. You know, when you get into traps and buildings, it, it's extremely expensive. The Restore the Roar Initiative, if you're familiar with that, that was supposed to all be private money. The board never committed to put public money into that. There were parts that we paid publicly, that was the lighting and some of the, you know, the essentials that we needed there. The turf was, was public money. But the Restore the Roar project was supposed to be, we made that clear when we adopted it, that it was going to be private money. It's a very expensive project and kind of a long-term project. So just to let you know, it was never meant, and I would never support that project being funded with public money. It's too, it's just, we don't, we can't afford it. But I think that we, I think that we're doing well with, I'm very proud of our fine arts programs and we're very fortunate to have the teachers that we have and their dedication and our students have really benefited from it. So I don't think we're shortchanging them. If you disagree, I'd like to hear another point of view, but I haven't heard anything about shortchanging the arts.
Who's next?
You're going to have to give me a couple of months to catch up if I, by some miracle, would be elected to the school board. I don't know what I would do. I don't know what the balances are. I don't know the money situation. After all, why should I? I'm just an average parent in this community and most, I'm sure of it, do not know all the ins and outs to it. Lois has a great advantage on that and I appreciate her input. And I attended a board meeting here the other night. It was a long one, almost four hours, almost 12 o'clock before we get out of here. And I checked with someone and said, "Is this the norm?" Because I might not just follow through with this. But balancing money, there's a way in which things creep. They always get to be a little bit more. As a remodeling contractor, you know, you fix the kitchen floor and then you want to go to the bathroom floor and then you want new... and then you want to go to the bathroom floor, and then you want new cabinets, and then you want new carpet. You want new windows. There's creep. How to watch out for that takes some pretty sharp people. Personally, I think we have some pretty sharp people on the board right now. And I hope that I can add to that, but it's not an easy thing to do. But the first thing is not to go to the well every time you need a little bit of money, and say, "From the residents of Blair County, give us more." I think we've given all we want to give for some time now, especially after the last tax raise. Let's sort of cool that end of it a little bit, and see what we can do without upping taxes.
I find it interesting that the, if you listen to the question again, it doesn't actually say which way the scales were tipped. We all just assumed that it was the arts that were getting the short end of the stick. You know, I've already shared with you how passionate I am about music and the arts, and obviously it's near and dear to me, having been the high school band director for a decade. But growing up as a teenager, I was also very active in sports. You know, earned my varsity letter on a couple of different teams. And I have a lot of respect for a sense of teamwork, and the effort that goes into all of our sports programs. Even though students might feel they're at odds sometimes in those two different disciplines, there are a lot of things that the arts and athletics have in common in terms of what those opportunities teach our students. I think it's easy perception-wise for students sometimes to think that the other side of that coin is getting favored financially. But I would have to say, if you look at the budget, I would guess, and it certainly was the case when I was a teacher here, it's pretty evenly split between both. I think that's one of the great things about Holliesburg as a school district, is it provides opportunities to that same level of high standard for students regardless of discipline. I think that's one of the reasons we're often looked to as, you know, one of the premier school districts in Blair County. One of the school board members the other day referred to us as the district where the grass is greener. And I think that's an interesting perspective. But to some point, I think the reason we have that view, and people sort of look at us sometimes as the standard to strive for, is because of that equal support of all discipline for our students.
We're going to move into our final question from, yes, our final question from the students. What is a major issue you see within the school district, and what do you believe you can do to change it? So what is a major issue that you see in the school district, and what do you believe you can do to change it?
This question was also asked by the Mirror, and I'll read my response. It's short. What is the biggest issue facing the district? Until I am able to get personally involved, I do not know the biggest issue of the district. But if I were to guess, it would be budget needs. That's right out front, that's honest, that's the best I can say to you. I don't know what the big issues are. Say, "Well, that's not much of a candidate for me." Fine. That's the nice thing about voting. Just get down one spot. But that's not, that isn't a good way to think, I don't believe. Why pretend to be something that I'm not? Is that what you want? I don't think so. That's enough on that.
You know, there really are a tremendous amount of issues that, you know, if elected, I will have to deal with. But fortunately, the school board is just one of the parts of the system of checks and balances within our school district. And there are nine of us on a board to sort of form that general consensus. Most of my personal viewpoints stem from a conservative vantage point. But, you know, even though I'm registered as a Republican, because I sort of have to choose one party or the other, I don't necessarily toe the party line in that regard. And so I often, you know, find it difficult to answer these sort of, you know, one-shot-only kind of questions, because I think there are many challenges that we will have to face. But to speak to the question itself, if I did have to choose one, and there are definitely some other issues that are close seconds, I think one of the biggest issues that face all educators today, and thereby extension, the school districts, is all of the mandated issues we have to deal with from above. You know, even 15 years ago when I was a teacher, to now, which in the span of a school district is a short amount of time, I am just awestricken at times, but the amount of legislation that comes from above telling the school districts, "You have to do this, you don't have a choice", you know? And I think that makes it challenging sometimes for directors and administration, especially, and even the teachers, to do what's right for students, to make the decisions that ultimately, you know, give every kid the best opportunity to learn. You know, I hope that's what, in the end, drives most of our decisions.
Well, we will have ongoing financial challenges for the foreseeable future. That's not going away. And that's going to be, continue to be, very difficult and challenging for us. There's just no two ways about it. The mandates are a problem. When I first ran for school board, I told people what I wanted to see was I would like to see representatives from every school district in the county, and maybe even regionally, get together on a legislative policy committee to work for legislative changes in Harrisburg to reduce some of the mandates. But unfortunately, it seems the only thing the boards are more concerned about is money. That we don't want to get rid of mandates, we just want them to give us more money. But guess what? There is no more money. It's not coming. We are going to have to make do with what we've got. So we've got to get serious about taking control of our schools, and doing the best with our education as we can. And I believe we can do better with the money that we're spending. We can do better to make sure that our children are ready for whatever is next after they graduate 12th grade. We can be doing more, and we should be doing more. The most important thing to a student is that teacher in the classroom. But at the board level, we get almost no information on any parent or student feedback on how their experience is going year by year. That bothers me. I would like more direct feedback from parents and students about their educational experiences every year in every classroom. And I think that would be helpful. I also want to know how many of our students are going to college and having to take remedial math and English their first year of college? Because that means they're retaking high school at college cost, and that's wrong. And I want to know how many of our students are doing that, and I want to know for all of Pennsylvania as well. Thank you.
Can you guys repeat your names?
Okay. Is this because we've had some latecomers to the party? Sure, yeah. Okay, thanks. I'm getting there, Richard. I'm Doug Stevens, for those of you that don't know me yet.
Lois Konachiki.
Ken Spire.
We still have more student questions on our sheet. What we are going to transition to now is some questions from the audience, and then we'll come back again to student questions towards the end, so that at least we've addressed the people in the room that had some things that they wanted to have addressed. So we're going to transition to that first. I do also have some statements here from candidates that were unable to attend, but they did want to have a statement made here. So I'm going to pause in between the transition and read those statements to you. So this statement is from Brandon Burns. He says that, "Holliesburg area parents and community members, thank you for the invitation to speak at the candidate forum today. Unfortunately, I had a prior engagement and wasn't able to attend. But I wanted to write a few words to tell you about why I am running for Holliesburg School Board, and what you can expect from me if elected. I'm running for the school board because I feel that education is at the core of a strong community, and I want to serve the community that I love to live in. A little over 10 years ago, my wife Becky and I moved to Holliesburg because it's a great place to live, go to school, and raise a family. We have two children who attend Frankstown Elementary, so I have a vested interest in Holliesburg schools. I want to ensure that the HASD community continues to give its young people every opportunity to grow and succeed. Being a school board member would allow me to pay it forward to the next generation. I'm not going to make you any grand promises about what I am going to change at Holliesburg. What I can promise you is that I will listen first, and ask clarifying questions in order to gain the perspective needed to make good decisions. Positive communication is critical to face the challenges of providing a quality education for our children while also balancing budgets and meeting state and federal requirements. If given the opportunity to serve on the school board, I would work with my fellow school board members and the district administration to consistently ask, "What is best for the students of Holliesburg, and how can we make it happen?" Over the past several months, I have attended many school board meetings to gain a firm grasp of the current issues. If elected, I promise to continue to do my homework and put a high level of effort into making Holliesburg the best school district possible. Thank you for your time, and please consider voting for me, Brandon Burns, on May 21st. And our next statement comes from Nicole Hardman. "I apologize, as I was unfortunately unable to make it. As a parent of children in all three levels of Holliesburg area school district, elementary, junior high, and senior high, I can assure you that my..." I'm feeling in words for the missing, sorry. "I can assure you that my objective is in the best interest of the education of your kids, your grandkids, your neighbors, and your friends' kids." "I intend, if elected, to be an active member of as many committees as I can. I have a unique view on things, seeing it from both the board's side and the parents. I promise, if elected, to make my decision to vote on issues placed before the board based on the facts and what is the best for the student body as a whole. Anyone who knows me knows I think for myself, and I'm not easily swayed by what others tell me to think without reasoning and the evaluation of facts. I intend to encourage responsible spending to get the most bang for your buck for these kids, to afford them every opportunity possible to thrive and grow within the district. Being a mother has taught me more than I had ever dreamed. I feel I can draw from that and use it to my advantage in this position." I was not unbiased in that. I'm sorry for my facial expressions. So we're going to move on to the audience questions. Okay, so our first audience question. "In 2017, the Holliesburg community raised nearly $110,000 to bring the 1970s-style planetarium to modern standards. Despite that, the school board did not come to an anonymous consensus to provide matching funds to replace this aging facility. As a school board member, will you support maintaining our academic facilities for our students?" This is in regard to the planetarium.
Not to be blasé about the question, but I think a simple yes or no will do. Of course I will. You know, we have to look at every situation case by case. I think everybody would mostly be in agreement that one of the biggest challenges we face, you know, as a school board, and as a district, you know, on the whole, is what do we do? What's the most effective use of the tax dollars that we're given every year? Bottom line, right, we want to maintain the great facilities that we have for our students. And I think the decisions will continue to be based, I hope, on what's best for children, and keeping, whether it's the planetarium, or the arts program, or the athletics, or, you know, any of the tremendous opportunities that we've already brought up today for our kids, obviously, we want to try and keep those as well maintained as possible. At the end of the day, we have to make tough decisions. And, you know, it's not always what everyone is going to agree is the right decision. You know, sometimes as a board, if you're paying attention, they can make unanimous decisions on what's best for kids, because they're obvious choices. But, you know, most of the time when it comes to it, we have to look at all of the, you know, issues related to whatever the concern may be. And sometimes, things cannot be maintained, because we're only given so much of a budget to work with. And as I alluded to before, when such a large piece of that pie is already spoken for, rather, before we even start to make those decisions, I think it makes it that much more challenging. So all I can promise you is, we'll do the best we can.
I was the board member that voted against the $90,000 for the planetarium. I was very proud of the students. They did a terrific job in raising that money. That was a very, it was a great life lesson, because guess what? A lot of the things we want in life, we have to go out and earn. Now, there's no such thing as free money. We did not have that $90,000 to spend. So it was not a fun decision, a fun vote to make, but I did what I thought was right. Because when I think of spending your money, I think of, is this the best we can do with that $90,000? And no one convinced us educationally, education-wise, that that was the best use of our $90,000. And unfortunately, we don't sit down as a school board and say, "Could this $90,000 be put to better use to make sure that our students are better educated when they graduate high school?" Now, maybe it was, and maybe it wasn't. We did not have that conversation. And from what I learned about the planetarium, which is a pretty cool thing to have, and makes, you know, it's a shiny, flashy object that we can brag about, but as I said, and I'll say it again, to me, looking at the planetarium, that is more passive learning. And students learn best with active learning, hands-on, when they are doing, not watching. We do a lot of watching in life. We watch video games. Sometimes that's more interactive than a planetarium. We watch TV, we watch videos. We do a lot of watching. But we really learn by doing. And so I was not convinced, and plus, it's an annual expense of at least $10,000 just to maintain the planetarium. That's another $10,000 we can't spend on something else. So based on the information I had, and the little time that we had to discuss the alternatives of using that kind of money, which we didn't have, I voted against it.
Well, I know nothing about the planetarium, so I can hardly give you a decent evaluation of that. But I do know something about a board member, and especially somebody new coming on. You best, you best keep an open mind when people are making presentations, and dig for the facts. And if you find those facts, expose them for what they are. If it's good, great. If it's bad, as our other speakers here have said, it's a juggling match, you know? You've got this restraint over here, you've got another restraint over here, and then you've got one here, and now you have an opportunity. Somehow, you've got to mix all that together and come up with a pleasant solution. This rarely happens. So I will go with an open mind. I will listen to the arguments, but I won't be pushed over.
From our audience, what is your opinion on putting metal detectors in our schools?
My understanding is metal detectors are extremely expensive, like in hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't like the thought of our schools being like going through TSA and becoming like a police state in our schools. And I think it's sad if we think our children have to live in that type of environment. At some point, it may get to that point because of demand from the community. But I think what we're doing now is good as far as security. We could have volunteers check bags when guests come in. As I said, metal detectors are extremely expensive. Somebody would have to make, you know, a really compelling argument why that was necessary. So far, no one has, none of our law and So far, no one has, has, none of our law enforcement or security professionals have recommended it at this point.
I think metal detectors are a little bit like having a lock on your door at home. Once you've locked your door, there's no possibility that anybody could get in. Isn't that right? No, it's not right. It's just something that delays. But junior high, senior high kids are smart. Smarter probably than maybe their teachers. If they don't have common sense, they might be smarter. I don't quite see the need in Holidaysburg School District for metal detectors. I just don't. And unless, uh, law enforcement could show me otherwise, I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't want to proceed on that.
Let me start off by saying, no, I don't think that would be a good use of taxpayer funds. I can speak to my personal experience on the issue. When I was a teacher here, we did three or four times a year have so-called random, uh, searches, uh, when students showed up in the morning to the building. We did have metal detectors in place. We did not only the metal detectors for every student, but random wand searches uh, of students to check their actual, uh, person and things that they carry with them. The first time our experience was that the shock value made a difference. But in subsequent times, even though, you know, it was all kept very cloak and dagger supposedly secret, I could stand at the far end of the building and see students telling other students. And this was before cell phones were real common for kids. And you could see kids making a return trip to their car before they came into the building. And so, we've gotten away from that some as a regular practice. Um, I know from my own personal children, uh, the first time they were exposed to that, it definitely got their attention. Um, not because they were bringing, uh, contraband into the school, but it really made them think about their classmates. You know, the kind of things you're searching for in those types of searches, the kids know better who has what and what's going on. And I think the fact that oftentimes, these students, um, that maybe kids expect will be stopped and that they suspect do have something that should be detected by a metal detector, doesn't happen. And so, the kids don't always see the value in those searches. So, obviously, it's a very expensive task. Perhaps there are other ways to address that, um, but I can't see where fiscally at least it makes sense.
Our next question, from the audience. Republicans have long been boasting of tax cuts, yet property taxes were raised extremely over the past few years. What are you planning on using that money for?
Whoever submitted that, uh, knows what's going on. I'll say that. And we have been taxed and the money, it's going somewhere, but I'm not quite sure where. With reassessment, that was a bad deal, in my opinion. And then with just a straight tax increase, I just don't quite understand that. Where the money goes, hey, I don't know. And, uh, a watchdog and a person that's accountable, I think we have some people on the board that are doing that. I hope that they are honest. And I hope that they are looking out for your interest, for my interest, but I don't know.
So this is obviously one of the hottest topics people like to talk about. Since I've been running for school board, it's probably the most often asked question of me. You know, all I can tell you is, I'm a taxpayer too. I don't like to give up any more of those funds. You know, I think certainly more people felt an increase as a result of the reassessment than did not. I own, um, two properties in the district and believe it or not, my net result between those two, because one went up and one went down, was three dollars and some odd cents more than I had to pay in taxes. So I felt very fortunate um, because I know that's not the case for a lot of people. To, you know, suggest in terms of some kind of platitude that I will always do this or I will never do this, I think is foolish. You know, we have to look at every case by case basis. I do definitely view the dollars that the district is given to spend as your money and our money and not, you know, once it's in the school district's hands, we do whatever we want with it, you know? This is an elected position and I take very seriously the responsibility to the taxpayer to make sure that those dollars are being used for what's best for our children. Uh, because as I've said, and I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but I hope it's coming across to you that I really uh, am running for this position because I want what's best for our kids. And I think that will drive a lot of my decisions, whether it's taxes or whatever the case may be.
I wonder if the student who, this is a student question, right?
No, it's from the county.
Well, the reassessment was done by the county. I mean, it affected the school district because the village got all changed around, so it affected everybody's taxes, but the school district had nothing to do with the reassessment. You all know that, right? But, um, then the county has, had been, um, there was neglect going on in the county budget for, for years and now they're playing catch-up. And three-quarters of our budget is salaries, salaries and the cost of our personnel. So there's only a quarter of it left for everything else, including building improvements, fixing leaky roofs, fixing our athletic facilities. So, there's not a lot of money to play around with, which is why I voted against the previous question and why I voted against some other things uh, that maybe aren't popular because it's a very tight situation. And anything that the public can finance on its own, I think that they should do it. And I'll give you an example, is the library. We have a great public library in, in Holidaysburg. They are, uh, they are having financial trouble. And they want us to raise your taxes to pay for the library. Now, I told them, if they would agree to not ask us for, to, to raise your taxes, I will personally come in and help them do better fundraisers so they can raise the money voluntarily from the community. No one came to me and took me up on my offer. It's still available, but I don't think I should, I should pick your pocket to pay for the library when you can write a check. You can go to the library this week and bring a check and make a donation if you value the library. If you don't value, value the library, it may close. So that's your choice. I don't want you to have to pay for something that you don't value. And with any items like that that can be done voluntarily, I would rather the public put their money where what's important to them.
Our next question. What is the problem with the new Common Core requirements?
You know, I alluded before to some of my, when the question was asked about, what's the biggest issue? This, and I said I had a couple of close seconds. Common Core would be one of those close seconds. You know, it's so hard, I think, in two minutes to address some of the issues with Common Core, but the reality of it is, you know, the way things are mandated currently, we have to do our best as a district to try and make the system work with what we're given. You know, I think it, it puts more of the burden on the teachers to be more creative, um, to try and find ways to engage students. You know, we've been going through a curriculum revision the last couple of years to try and, you know, keep things on board with what's expected of us from the, uh, the state and federal levels. And, you know, to get into the nuts and bolts of Common Core, uh, in this short amount of time, I think is, is pretty challenging. Um, yeah, I'm already halfway through my answer, so. I'm losing battery, better here than there will be later. So, you know, I guess what I want to make clear in my response to that question is that, um, I understand some of the realities of, of Common Core and the changes uh, that are, I know, as a district, we're faced with to try and meet those changes. You know, um, I heard a quote recently that change is like driving in the fog and you still get where you're going, but you can't see where you're going most of the time you're making the trip. Um, and I think, you know, that's part of, uh, the turmoil or, you know, concerns surrounding the issues that a lot of people have with Common Core is, we don't quite understand why we're being asked to make those changes. And so, for me personally, I think some of it is just trying to clarify why the changes are viewed as necessary.
I am going to defer that question to the person on my right. She is far more, far more involved and far more knowledgeable about the subject.
Well, there are many problems with Common Core, many problems, not just one, but I'll focus on the one that, one that really bothers me the most and that most, and that's the math standards. And what Doug said about teachers being creative, the biggest problem with the math standards, the teachers can't be creative. They're required to teach math a certain way. And this is experimental. This is a project where our kids are guinea pigs, as far as I'm concerned, from kindergarten on up. And the, the, the children that we need to be the most flexible with, the elementary-age kids, those are the ones where the program is the most rigid. And we are teaching math in a way that's never been taught before. It's not being taught in any other country this way. And it's absolutely ridiculous and it's a crime. And I, I feel very bad for parents with their children in elementary school. And I know that, uh, our director of curriculum who's here, I know that she has done her best to try to deal with these new standards and we have a new program, uh, Go Math, to deal with that and to help parents and students, and I think it has been helpful. But, um, this is an experiment that I, as I said before, I don't think is going to end well. And I would encourage you to get involved with that and tell your legislators, we need to have flexibility with math instruction. If a certain way of teaching math isn't working, we need to be able to change it for a different way. And that means we're going to have to change the tests. Because all the tests, now the standardized tests are aligned with Common Core. And if the children aren't doing it the Common Core way, they are going to be penalized. And that's the worst part of it, the PSSAs, the Keystone, and the SATs. So it is a big problem and I'm not going to sugarcoat it, as if I ever would.
Would you be open to alternative forms of teaching schools such as Montessori, multi-age, or magnet schools? And I believe this is directed at the school board being willing to fund different forms of schools.
Actually, I'll take this time to say, we have been vetting some of the questions. And we just wanted to remind any audience members who are considering submitting a question. It's really important that they're addressed to all candidates, not to anyone in particular. So any questions that are really specific to one person, we're not going to have those read out loud, just so you're aware. Uh, I guess we could do an intermission?
So once again, the board's willingness to fund, um, alternative forms of education, Montessori, multi-age, or magnet schools?
Actually, this is a great question. I love this question. And we have a Montessori school right up the hill and they're a great school. And I would love to send some of our teachers to Montessori, uh, education training. Um, I would raise money for that personally, raise money so they can come out of taxpayers. And first, I'd like to send some of our teachers administrators up there to observe the schools. I really love the way they do pre-K and the younger grades. It's a, it's a great program. And I would love to get that into our school at no additional cost. And we could start a pilot program perhaps, maybe in one of the buildings, um, or maybe one teacher per building and start it out and see how parents like it. Um, now with Common Core, that makes things more complicated, but I think we should try. We should look at different ways of doing things and, um, if parents are willing to try something new, we should make it voluntary and have options. I think that would be terrific.
Alternative education confronts every parent. And, uh, from homeschoolers to religious schools, to secular schools that are private, to programs that are computer-oriented, all kinds of things are going on. I don't see where that is the mandate of our local school board who taxes everyone irregardless of whether you send your kids to one of these schools or not. So if you do send your kids to a school like that, then you're paying double. You're paying the tax and you're paying the tuition. I don't see where that's a, uh, that's a good deal. I don't. As to the attitude about alternative education, that's a different story. I wouldn't mind talking about that. But as to far the actual financial end of it, the obligation of it, the legal obligation, I don't think so. And, uh, I would far more rather to see if somebody wants to step out on their own that they realize they're paying the cost to do that. I don't think they ought to be penalized for it, but I don't think they need to be subsidized for it either.
Again, speaking from my own personal experience, I can tell you that my wife Lauren and I decided with all four of our children that they would attend the pre-K program at Pennmont. And we have been thrilled with the kind of education they've received in terms of preparing them for a regular matriculation into the public school system. To answer the question more specifically, I'm always willing to consider all options. If it's truly something that is worth considering, that's going to benefit the opportunity for our students. If you look at education nationally for our country, uh, I'm sorry to say, a lot about our educational system in my humble opinion is broken. If you compare our achievement levels to other nations around the globe, we don't hold up quite so well anymore. Certainly not like we did when my parents and grandparents were students. And so, if considering alter- alternative, uh, opportunities for our students is going to give us some inroads and possibilities for other options to help increase achievement levels for students um, and give more direct opportunities to students, um, in terms of their specific skill sets, instead of just taking a blanket approach to everybody that, here's the bar and every student must meet it. I think we need to look at other opportunities. Um, I think, whether we want to or not, the time for change is coming. Um, and that's just my personal viewpoint of things, uh, but I think there are definitely other opportunities we have to look at. I realize funding is an issue as soon as you start to talk about those opportunities, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't look.
The school district can always balance its books by raising taxes. What metric will you use to determine whether the district is spending beyond the means of the community even if the books are balanced? The school district can always balance its books by raising taxes. What metric will you use to determine whether the district is spending beyond the means of the community even if the books are balanced?
Over spending deficits- Over spending, deficit spending. I don't want to do it in my own home. I don't want to go out and buy something that I can't afford. I want to have some savings and backup so that I can meet emergency situations. I sort of like that better than thinking, well, let's just up the taxes a few mils. And as long as the rules will allow us to do it, let's do it. I'm not too much in favor of that. The concern of a school board, of a public school board, certainly ought to be the public, the folks. And now, we don't have referendums, some states do, some counties do, I guess. But there ought to be a way to make sure that in these reports, for instance, we're giving that this is what the board has decided, we are not going to spend the money there because to spend the money in that particular location means we're going to have to raise taxes. I don't like this idea of selling a big program to somebody and then coming back to them and saying, ah, but you got to pay for it. And the only way you're going to pay for it is to receive more tax money. I, I don't like that kind of reasoning. I think there's a better way to do it than that.
So the question was about metrics, what metrics are you going to use? And that's very difficult because the Holliesburg community has a wide range of income levels. We have people on a very low end and then we have people on a very high end. So you can always make the argument that certain people can pay more, which of course, they could. But I'm concerned with, you have to be concerned that not just taken more, but that it's spent well. And as I already said, three quarters of the budget is personnel costs. And most, and all of that is negotiated in contracts. And we're negotiating, next year will be a teachers' union contract renegotiation. And we negotiate these, this arrangement for a three-year time period when we have to do a budget annually. So I think the board arranged to do that at some point to save on lawyer costs. I don't know if that's the right way to do it or not, but we do have to be careful when we commit ourselves with three quarters of our budget in a three-year contract. We've got to be sure we can do that, because those are big commitments. And something's got to give. That means either you're raising taxes more or you've got to cut something for the students. Those, they are hard choices. So those union negotiations are extremely important and they're, they are not easy. And I wanted to say, we need your help on changing some of the laws that would help us save money. And one example is the prevailing wage. If we could get rid of the prevailing wages, we could save a lot of money and still have the same quality of the services that we get at the school district. But those prevailing wages increase building costs, construction costs ten, ten to twenty percent. That's a big hike. And just by getting rid of those, and those would be your state legislators, they could do that. So if you would go to them and help us with that, that's something that would help all the school districts around the state.
To speak to the actual question, I would not be in favor of considering a metric, at least on a typical basis, that would create a system, in my opinion, of inequity where, you know, people that have more funds at their disposal should be taxed more and people that have less funds should be taxed less. I don't think that's the way our system is intended to work. You know, as I said before, I'm always willing to consider possibilities, but that to me doesn't sound equitable. All I can tell you when it comes to budgeting, you know, as a small business owner, for the last thirteen years, you know, I am not sharing with you, there have been times when I've really had to make hard decisions. Decisions like not taking my own personal paycheck so that I could pay my employees. And those are the sacrifices you make, and I make them willingly. I'm not standing here, you know, asking for your sympathy. But simply to share with you that when it comes time to look at the budget and decide where the funds need to be spent, I think the first approach has to be, here's how much tax revenue is available, these are the fixed costs that we don't really have control over, and then this is what's left. Many of you are, I'm sure, are aware that right now we're looking at a proposed fifty-one and change million-dollar budget, right, with a 1.8 surplus, and we're debating over how that's going to be covered. I think we have to reconsider the way we look at that and say, here's what we have to work with, just like I do every month in running a business. Because after all, that's how the school system is set up to run.
This one's about curriculum. In regards to our school science textbooks, over ninety-seven percent of climate scientists agree that climate change is caused by human activity. If you don't base your opinions on science, what do you base your views on? In regards to our school science textbooks, over ninety-seven percent of climate scientists agree that climate change is caused by human activity. If you don't base your opinions on science, what do you base your views on?
Okay, the assumption in the question is incorrect. Ninety-seven percent of climate scientists do not agree on the climate change assertions. That ninety-seven percent comes from PhDs in general, most of which do not have an expertise in climate or any of that, they may be scientists in other disciplines. So that number itself is misleading. And I would highly recommend you check out the book Inconvenient Facts by Pennsylvania's geologist Greg Wrightstone, who's been doing the media circuit. From the book, it's a fascinating book and there's a lot of information in there that you won't get from some other sources. But there is a, a lot of information out there that is not correct. We should, we should go by science, that's true, facts, but you've got to make sure, you got, you, you don't cherry pick your facts, you've got to try to get as many facts as possible. So I would encourage people to look at all, you know, more information and, you know, don't necessarily go by one or two articles on the subject.
Well, this ought to stir the pot. I do not regard science as the ultimate. I just don't. And I don't plan on changing that in any way. I think the technology and the advance in our lifestyle is amazing. And there's a lot of good things come through that. But to say that in the bottom line, when all else fails, we'll find some scientist from some university that will define what's happening. And I don't believe that. I do not see that as the ultimate. I have to be a little careful here because I'm a pastor of a church. Unless I give you the wrong idea and you throw me out of here before five o'clock, I want to be careful, but I don't want to be evasive. I do not place science equal to God himself. Here I am.
Okay, so I, I'm not sure if we're still on topic with the questions about or what the intent was, but I'll tell you what I think. I too share a very Christian-oriented belief system. I was raised as a Christian man and I'm proud to say, you know, I'm the head of a household that believes in Christian family values. That being said, there is definitely a place in our curriculum for science. I think, as I understand the issue with this specific AP textbook, I think it's more about what I was trying to speak to before as being a big issue that we face as educators today, is again, because we want to teach this AP course, we have to use this textbook. We're told what textbook we have to use, rather than saying, here's the material your students need to know. Now, as someone who designed and taught an AP class myself, I realize there has to be a common element of text for students to learn from because they're all working towards the same test. But again, I think we have to find creative means to make sure our students are having access to all viewpoints. You know, it, it is very easy to adopt and get focused on a textbook that only presents one side of an issue, whether it be science, or math, or English, or music, or whatever it may be. And so I just think the challenges we face again, especially when they're dictated from, you know, a higher legislative body, really, we have to continue to be, you know, watchdogs about what it is that we're making our students aware of and realize that there are always multiple sides to every viewpoint.
And this will be our final audience question, at which point we'll open up to a general, you can come up and speak to the candidates as long as they're willing to engage audience members. Or we could do more student questions, we could do those too. Kids, do you want to know about recess at high school? They're interested in dodgeball also. Research has repeatedly demonstrated the value of early childhood education. A student who can't read on grade level by third grade is four times more likely to drop out of high school than a child who does read proficiently by third grade. As a school board member, how will you support education for pre-K to second grade? What do you think is the most important during this time period? One more time. It's a lot, okay, one more time. Research has repeatedly demonstrated the value of early childhood education. A student who can't read on grade level by third grade is four times more likely to drop out of high school than a child who does read proficiently by third grade. As a school board member, how will you support education for pre-K to second grade? What do you think is the most important during this time period?
I'm so glad this question was asked, as far as the acknowledgement of the importance of pre-K education. This is such a passion of mine and my wife's in the way we've tried to direct our own child's, children's education. It's imperative, and I know many of you have children in the district as well, it's imperative in my opinion that we focus as much of our educational and financial assets on pre-K and early childhood education. If we don't understand the value of placing a focus on creating a strong foundation for all of our students, no matter what the subject area, not just math and English, I think we're missing the boat. The idea that education is a top-down directive, I think, is a little bit misguided. And again, I'm just speaking from my personal experience. But I've watched how my four children have developed. And if you have multiple children, if you have kids that are siblings, you, you know how different every kid is and how every kid learns differently. But one of the common elements I've seen as a parent is how important what they learn in those formative years forms, you know, a foundation and a network for what they do in the years to follow. And if, and if we, you know, as a district and as a community, are not willing to make that focus, I think we're missing the boat a little bit. Because without a great foundation in, in all of the subject areas, not just the ones mandated by test scores, I think our kids are not getting the, the opportunity to realize their full potential in all of their disciplines, and especially in the skill areas where they have the most strength.
Okay, the problem with the assumption is that every kid is going to benefit from the same pre-K kindergarten program. And that's not true, because every child is different. And at age four, five, and six, kids are very, very different developmentally at where they're at. And we know for a fact, especially boys and girls, right, even boys and girls are very, very different at young ages. And then we know at some point later, the girls catch up to boys and boys catch up to girls in the different areas where girls develop verbally quicker and boys are, you know, develop later verbally. I mean, we know it's just a developmental fact. The problem is when we have, especially now with the standards that we have, we have a bunch of standards, now we have more demands on kindergarten teachers than ever before. And we're putting all these kids in expecting them all to meet the same standards when they're five years old. And the kids don't fall, don't develop that way. That's not what's right for all kids. In fact, there is data to show that if you tried, and if you've ever tried to teach a little kid something they're not ready for, you know, it can be very frustrating for both of you. And when I homeschooled my younger daughter, I'll give you an example with reading. And this is just one example, but there are many, many examples that you could, you could hear. Is that I, when I did all my research about education, I learned that phonics is the best way to teach a child to read. So I said, great, we're going to do phonics. She didn't want to do it. So all my readings said, well, just try later, try in a few months, try in six months. So we'd pick it up every once in a while. And she just never wanted to do it. And I thought for sure I was going to screw her up for life, right, she was never going to read. And then, one day, she just, I found out she was just reading. Like I didn't even do phonics with her. It was like a miracle. But kids are miraculous, and they're all different. And if we, we're, I'm just going to say, if we try to force all our children into the same programs at kindergarten and pre-K, we are setting certain children up for trouble and I worry about those situations.
I would, I would not want the school board to replace parents. But you know, and I know, that almost fifty percent of homes are divided. A lot of times, there's no father there, sometimes there's no mother there. I've seen all of that, I've talked to people like that, and I know what the kids have to go through. So if we can just simply throw money at a situation and institutionalize, is that the right way to go? I don't think so. I don't think so. Parents have a responsibility. And kids learn in the very early stages of life, certain things. They learn how to be self-willed. They learn how to say no quicker than anything you've ever learned. And as was mentioned, the differences in personality are absolutely amazing. Who is best, if it's one-on-one, to teach preschool? It's mom or dad? Hopefully, it's both. I'm, I'm not in favor of the school board looking at how it can spend money on pre-education, unless I would have my whole world and life view changed to say, the only thing education is about is to put my kid at the head of the line.
And that sums it up for any audience questions. We do still have student questions if we're interested, or I think, um, did you put it in the box or? Um, I guess we'll poll the audience. Would you like to hear more student questions, or would you like some time with the candidates? We have about half an hour left.
Student questions.
Student questions?
Time with candidates.
Time with candidates. So we have one more audience question that we'll bring in. Actually, we do have two students here. Are you just observing?
Well, we put some questions in, but how about a discussion? Why don't we have like a discussion like everybody? Yeah, just everybody. Yeah, just everybody have a discussion together about everything.
Nope, dangerous. But we can have people privately talk to candidates.
Only because we changed...
Sure, rules.
We changed the format.
Yeah. Yeah, society was called the energy up here. One more question. John Locke would tell us differently.
Right, you guys are in service class, social contract.
Okay. Sorry, I'm also a teacher, I just gave that away. He's silly written question, I will try to turn into a sentence. What is the role of Holliesburg Area School District regarding cyber and charter education? What is the role of Holliesburg Area School District regarding cyber and charter education?
I don't know. I don't know.
Well, this issue's really gotten suppressed recently too. You know, again, it's part of our responsibility, right, the mandate that we're responsible, right, for using tax dollars to provide every student with an education. And so, right now, as it's mandated from above, right, a certain amount of our budget every year goes to paying for those students, those families that choose cyber education. You know, as I understand it, there are, hopefully, will be some changes soon at the state level. They recently tabled some legislation, unfortunately, that could have opened it up for school districts to have the opportunity to provide an alternative local option for cyber schools, which would greatly reduce the district's expense. But one of the things, one of the facts about this information that is still unclear to me, that would help understand a little bit more about how this process works regarding cyber and charter schools, is that how does it compare? You know, it always talks about this is how much it costs to provide this opportunity for these students. But how does that cost per student that elects to do cyber? How does that compare to what we're paying for the students that are doing traditional education? It never actually specifically says that that's more. Maybe it's not, I don't know the answer to that. And those are the kind of facts I would like to know more about, so I can make an informed decision at the board level to consider some of those other possibilities.
I believe we already have our own cyber school program in the district, I thought we did. And that saves us money if they use our cyber school program, because then we don't have to pay another company. So, hopefully, we have a high-quality cyber school program. I haven't gotten feedback from the public, so I don't know how parents feel about it. But I believe parents should have options. You know, some people pull their kids out because of bullying, that's been one issue. They pull their, they have them at home because of that. And I'm glad they had that option, because that saves their kid a lot of heartache. So, that's a good thing. But... So, oh, I know what I was gonna say. One of the things I have asked board, or our administration, I said, "If people are pulling their kids out of our school to send them to another cyber school, what are we doing to follow up, to ask the parents, why are they pulling our kids out?" Because if you're, for example, if you're a business and people are leaving your business and going somewhere else, you would wanna know those customers, why they left you, so you can improve. And I don't, we're not doing that, and I don't understand why. You know why, but we're not doing it, I think we should. I think we should contact all those families and ask for their feedback. What could we do differently that we would've kept you? So, that's one thing that I'd be interested in doing, and that would save our district money if we can improve those, whatever those elements are, and keep the students at our school.
So, once again, I'd like to thank our audience and our candidates for coming out here today and supporting us. The PTA, the PTO. The PTA, the PTO for hosting this and organizing and putting it all together. And especially our candidates for being willing to sit up here and answer our questions and participating and engage. We will give them a moment to do final statements, and then we'll open up for some engagement with the candidates personally.
Sure.
The district? Yes, the school district also supports us. Thank you. Wanna start with Ken then, and we'll go the opposite way of our opening statements? Closing statement? It's not working.
Make sure the switch is on, Ken.
It beeped out right in the middle of Lois and...
It might be the receiver.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
It's okay.
You're on, Stan's microphone.
No mic.
No mic.
I think I can do it.
Use your pastor voice.
I'm going to read to you the third response I made to the Altona Mayor. My, or the question was, "Why are you running for school board?" Everybody that knows me, without exception, I believe, everyone that knows me said, "What in the world do you want into that mess for?" And I said, "I don't know." But when I think about it and reflect on it, this could be the summary. My experience may be a help to continue to shape our local school district's effort to prepare young people for the choices of careers, employment, residence, and community involvement. I would really like to see more of our kids living and working in Blair County or close to it. There are programs, there are ways. It would extend to career counseling in our public school. It would extend to other programs like the Vote Tech and things like that that could provide a good base. I don't like my kids all over the place. I have a great big old farmhouse that I live in, and I have seven kids. And my dream was to have seven little houses right around it. Guys came in and married my daughters and took them off to Minnesota, North Carolina. I'd like to see them stay close. And we can do it.
Balancing the budget is going to be increasingly challenging for the foreseeable future. It is going to be even more important to have hands-on board members in these difficult times. We have three experienced board members not running for reelection. It's important to keep some continuity on the board with experienced members to maintain some collective memory on the board. I promise that if I am reelected, to continue to do what I believe is right for our students, our teachers, and our community.
Well, I hope some of my personal viewpoints have come through today in our discussion. Again, I wanna thank the ladies that organized this event. I think it's an important one for the community, whether it be three candidates, or eleven, or the twenty-two that the paper alluded to. You know, for me, at the end of the day, what matters to me the most is having an opportunity, if I'm so elected, to be a safeguard, to hopefully help make decisions that are gonna benefit all of our students, not just my own who are attending the district. But I would be extremely humbled by the opportunity to help be a watchdog, if you will, for your own children and grandchildren, and nieces and nephews that attend, you know, a district that I'm very proud of. Proud of the fact that I was a teacher here for ten years. And I tend to look at things through that lens, and I think it serves me well. I guess I wanna leave you with this, to hopefully maybe end things on a little bit of a lighter note, because we've had some serious discussion today. You know, as I was growing up as a young man, especially in my teenage years and early twenties, there was a saying that my dad always came back to. And I've now shared it with my teenage children, to the point where it's kind of common in our household. But he always said, "There are three kinds of people in the world. Those that make things happen, those that watch things happen." And I'll sugarcoat the last part. Those that say, "What the heck happened?" And so, I hope you'll give me the opportunity to stop being on the sidelines and get in the fight. Thank you.